Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen of the Town in Stockbridge Meeting for January 27, 2022 to order. First on our agendas this evening, we have Van Kacoyanakis, I hope I pronounced your name right, from VHS, to give us an overview of the Red Lion Inn intersection and the traffic on Main Street and how we're going to be addressing that project. So are you ready to start a presentation, Van?
Yes, I am. Let me just share my screen.
Can you sharing?
No. Okay. Can you guys see that?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Just want to move this to the side.
Do we have people from the public?
We have.
Have many?
One, two, three, four, five people.
Would you like me to start?
Yes, please go right ahead.
Well, I'm going to be going over the intersection of South and Pine Streets at Main Street, along with some other improvements along Main Street in the general vicinity. The purpose of this virtual informational meeting is to review the preliminary plans, which include the intersection of South and Pine Streets at Main Street, crosswalk removal on Main Street, relocating the crosswalk going across Main Street at the intersection of Elm Street, and providing a raised crosswalk in front of the town hall. Work completed to date, we reviewed crash data, performed a field survey, developed concepts, had a previous virtual meeting, which we identified alternatives, and we took one of the preferred alternative and actually constructed in the field utilizing painting. And we also included the preliminary plans for the intersection of South and Pine Streets at Main Street. So today, just a brief overview, about a year and a half ago, paintings were painted within the intersection, which include a painted island and curb extensions, as well as bike lanes connecting Main Street through the intersection. And here's some photos of those markings in the field. The project moving forward for preliminary design, there are intersection improvements at South and Pine at Main, removing a crosswalk just east of the intersection. The crosswalk going across Main Street at the intersection of Elm Street will be moved to the west, and we're installing a raised crosswalk in front of the town hall. So the improvements at South and Pine Streets at Main Street intersection, there's going to be traffic calming, we're trying to narrow the pavement, extend some of the curbing, and in order to extend and narrow the intersection, we're having mountable pavement, which we really can't extend the curb any further because there's a lot of trucks that turn through the intersection. This will allow the trucks to mount these areas, but in return, it creates a more defined area for the vehicles to move throughout. All the crosswalks and pedestrian curb ramps will be updated. There will be an additional crosswalk on the east side of, I'm sorry, the west side of the intersection, providing bike lanes through the intersection. There's an improved lighting option, and like I mentioned, we're removing the crosswalk east of the intersection. So here's the preliminary plan. Bump out here on this corner, that's the northwest corner, so the crosswalk that's proposed is shorter than crossing the entire length of Main Street. We bumped out the southwest corner as well, providing new ramps at these locations. The crosswalks going across South Street and Pine Streets will remain in the same locations, but the ramps will be, the pedestrian curb ramps will be updated to the latest ADA standards. The crosswalk along, on the east side of South Street and Pine Street is here, is shown. Again, we're bumping out the curb, so the distance is shorter, but we are currently looking at making this a raised crosswalk to include more of a traffic, more traffic calming at the intersection. And to date, right now, we think this is feasible and this work can be done. There are curb extensions along in front of the Red Lion Inn, and also across the street, there's a curb extension here. The curb is being extended at the islands on both sides of Main Street, Pine Street, and also South Street. And these hatched areas are further extensions, but this will be mountable for trucks on both sides, and the center island as well will be mountable. The crosswalk east of the intersection will be removed. It currently, today, it connects to a driveway, and it's not ADA accessible. Improvements at the crosswalks along Main Street, here the two locations, like you said, we're shifting the crosswalk at Elm Street to move out of the driveway, and the curb ramps, pedestrian curb ramps will be updated. At the town hall, the crosswalk is also going to have updated pedestrian curb ramps, and it's, the crosswalk will be raised. When I'm referring to pedestrian curb ramps being updated, they're going to meet the latest ADA standards, and they'll have detectable warning strips. This is just the preliminary plan for the two crosswalks I'm referring to. The existing crosswalk was here, it's moving over approximately about 15 feet in order to, so it's not entering a driveway, and it'll have, like I mentioned, ADA accessible ramps. In front of the town hall, the crosswalk, again, ADA accessible pedestrian curb ramps will be constructed, and the crosswalk will be raised. Just here are some pictures of the existing crosswalks, the crosswalk at Main Street east of Pine and South Street. As you can see here, it is entering a driveway. And then at Elm Street, it's doing the same thing, the crosswalk's entering a driveway. This is just a photo of the existing crosswalk at the town hall, where the pedestrian curb ramps don't have detectable warning panels. And then just to give an overall view of the project, this is the existing condition. This is what it's going to be looking like in the future. You can see how the roadways are bumped out, there's areas for landscaping on each of the corners, and the landscaping can be provided in the curb extensions. The plantings will need to be at a lower level, so we're not creating any sight distance issues. These are the mountable pavement areas. And then looking at it from an intersection standpoint, and I'll play this again, new crosswalks with pedestrian curb ramps, plantings in the area, an optional lighting, plantings again, here the mountable pavement areas. And I'll just, just so I can, I want to just hit play. Got to go back a slide. So that's what's today, and these were the changes that would For lighting option, at this point in time, these are about 22 feet in height, they provide lighting for both the road and the sidewalks. And there's also options to put lights on the back of the poles, which would provide even more lighting for the pedestrian walkways. Project costs, it's broken down, the improvements to South and Pine Streets at Main Street, with the crosswalk improvements along Main Street is $639,000. The lighting option is $321,000, and including an additional race crosswalk at the intersection of South and Pine on the east side is roughly $35,000, and that's to ensure that the roadway will drain properly, placing the race crosswalk in that area. Total's just under $1 million. And if anyone has any questions?
I like it.
Yeah, I do too.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead.
Van, great presentation. Question, I just want to reiterate and have you speak to how much of this project really is about ADA compliance, which I believe the town has a responsibility to make progress on. You know, I think, you know, one might come away from the presentation thinking this was just a cosmetic improvement, whereas in fact, we have to show, you know, progress on, you know, American with Disabilities Act compliance in order to, you know, avoid, I mean, you can talk to him more, Michael, but I just want to make sure people understand that there is a practical benefit to the project as well.
Yeah, you know, all the pedestrian curb ramps, as mentioned, within the project limits are going to be upgraded. So this photo here, and this is just a good example, and I can go back to some other photos, but this curb ramp here is, it's just an extension of the sidewalk, and it doesn't meet ADA complacency because it doesn't have a detectable warning panel. And the detectable warning panel allows the person to understand that, once they hit the detectable warning panel, that they're entering a street. All the ramps that we're also providing are entering the roads at a perpendicular crossing point. So in other words, we're not having any apex ramps which lead pedestrians into the intersection at an angle, where they're not entering the crosswalk at a perpendicular movement. So it's kind of confusing on which way they should be heading. I'm just going to go to a few other pictures.
While he's doing that, Michael, what's the implication if we don't make progress on ADA?
So obviously, your main issue is whether or not you ever receive an ADA complaint, and then you have to have what are called transition plans and a self-evaluation. Last year, we completed our transition plan and self-evaluation, which identified deficiencies around the town in terms of ADA, which included Main Street, crosswalks in the house. What we should be doing is, we are supposed to be showing progress as we move forward. So as we begin designing other things into these projects, we need to be looking at how to comply with ADA.
Right. And in your opinion, does this show progress?
Yeah.
I understand. I just want to make sure that the viewers, you know, if we ever get any, understand.
I have a question also, because I know that there's been some discussion that possibly there's an avenue for funding part of this, which would be the Main Street corridor itself, not just, not the intersection, but the crosswalks and possible lighting, additional lighting that could be covered. And if you want to maybe speak to that grant possibility.
Yeah, there is a shared street grant, which last year came out, and we got it in $15,200, but they now have a project up to 200,000, which includes safety, ADA compliance, and traffic calming, which all this, including the raised sidewalk, the crosswalks and the rest do it. So Van was able to present, split out the project, and that work up in there, without the lighting, just the crosswalk fix, is about 163,000, and we can do up to 200,000, so that application, plus you want to leave some contingency. So right now, this gets us where we could look, and I am going to file for the crosswalk improvement through the shared street program. And that's to be first.
If I could add to that, Michael, the, those two crosswalks, I did include conduit for lighting, so that, so the road wouldn't be, you know, if you were, put that in, and then you wanted to put in lighting later, you don't have to rip up the road after you've done that construction. So that's actually, that's actually included.
Thank you.
The conduit and the handholds would be there in place, so you wouldn't have to go back.
Perfect. Van, can you address how, and if, it may not even be necessary based on prior improvements we've made, but with the increased severity of storms, have we taken into account potential flooding events, you know, rain events that we, you know, might anticipate as being 100 or 500-year event, but which seem to be happening with increased frequency? Like, is there any concurrent work we should be thinking about related to, you know, rain events that while we're doing this construction, we should be thinking about?
Well, this is, this is kind of a, like, this work that's being done, this is, it's not, we're not adding any impervious area, we're actually kind of including a little bit more not impervious area with these bump outs being landscaped. So we, you know, the drainage improvements here are minor, it's just adjusting catch basins. One thing that we did look at, and this really isn't answering your question, because as a whole, this, we're really not impacting any of the impervious area here. It's pretty much staying the same, but what we did look at is, if you could see my cursor, this crosswalk is being looked at as being raised, and we just adjusted it, the drainage, or we're doing that now, we're adjusting the drainage in this area to include additional catch basins, so that we don't create any drainage issues out there, as an example, puddling or ponding. But from the standpoint that you're requesting, it's, there's a possibility to create some of these landscape areas and create almost like infiltration areas to include or help out with some of those rainfall events, but to date, that isn't planned for, but with some of these areas, there is that possible opportunity.
What do you think of, is that an issue for us, or?
Not with the scope of this project, you know.
If we're digging it up anyway.
Raised, because once you get in the subsurface and the rest, yeah, you're dealing with quite a bit, so.
I don't know, maybe you don't remember, maybe you were away at college. Do you remember, Chuck, when Main Street used to flood severely?
Yeah.
So I mean, it used to be.
Yeah.
We would get it up to, up the curb, but, so they took care of that many years ago.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Just making sure.
But there is definitely less impervious area out here, so that's going to help out a little bit, but not significantly.
All right. And do you have the breakout of, as Mike addressed, you know, doing the shared streets to fund some of this, do you have that breakout on a slide?
If you, Van, if you just go to the price slide.
Go back to the price.
So the 639, we can remove 163 to go toward the grant for the shared street, which then would leave the difference there. So you're down to 400 and something if we were able to get that.
Right.
And then you have to examine whether or not we want to do the lighting option, which is optional, so.
Right.
And we know that it's substantial, but it's, yeah.
We know it's substantial, but we also know that we have, you know, inadequate lighting in the evening on that section of Main Street. So I think it's well worth it. If we're going to be doing this project, do it and make it attractive, and then it serves that purpose. And hopefully, they can also be controlled. So that's a question for Van. So these could be set up, the lighting option could be set up to be controlled?
How do you mean, how do you mean controlled?
And actually, Van, the answer would be yes, because we'd be putting in LED light bulbs.
Oh, yes, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, so this would all be LED lighting. Let me just go over where those lights would be. And I'm just going to go back to the, sorry about that. So right now, this is a lighting concept. So we're proposing a light here, here, oops, I got to be very careful with the smells, here, here, across the way here, and here. And then there'd be one on each side for these other two crosswalks. So there's about eight, eight lights, light standards at the intersection, and there's additional four at the other two.
So that price includes all the lighting?
That price includes the lighting, the lighting fixtures, the poles, the foundations, the conduit, handholds, and I'm assuming this section here would be on one load center, and the intersection would be on its own load center. And so, and those lights would be metered and owned by the town.
So that, unlike the other ones that are underground and owned by a national grid. Right, but we'd only own to the, to the stations, the metering stations, so.
But we're comfortable, because obviously, it's going to be, the wiring's underground.
It's all initially new from the pole.
You got answers for everything.
He's good.
Well, we met the other day on lighting, Vans.
I think it's a very good project. I think it's a needed project, and I would, you know, just push forward with it and do the lighting and everything, get it done.
I agree. I think we just need to put it on the warrant.
Yep, move our motion. Make a motion, we do the work necessary to get this on the warrant.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good job, Van, thanks.
Yeah, excellent job.
Hey, Van, you know the pretty picture of what it's going to look like in the future? Is there any way we could get that on like a poster size, so that we could display that?
I don't see why not. Yeah, we can, I could have that mounted and sent to you.
That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just make sure we're talking the same photo, that's all. So I'm sharing my screen again.
Nice flowers.
Are you talking about this here?
No, not that one.
Transitions, right.
Yeah, the pretty transition, right there, that.
Okay, you want this on, mounted?
The other one that would be helpful is go back a couple, where you have the overhead view of the whole street.
Yeah.
That one. Yep. I think those two would be very helpful to illustrate to people, this is what we're doing, and this is what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I can have these sent to you. Just, it has to go to our Watertown office, they have to print it and mail it out, but just a couple weeks, and you should have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, great job. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Do we have any questions from the public for Van or for us on this topic? Any hands up?
I don't see any hands, but we do have Brent, it looks like.
Yes. Sorry, I just have a question about, when people unfamiliar with the town enter the intersection, they frequently don't understand intuitively that it's a three-way stop and not a four-way stop. Has anything ever been thought about how that might be made clear to people? Because that seems to me to be the principal hazard of that intersection in my personal experience. Sometimes people think when they have the right of way, they don't, so they hesitate, and nobody knows what to do, because they're afraid to move out into the intersection, because the person with the right of way might all of a sudden realize, I have the right of way, and charge ahead. So any, any thoughts about that?
Yeah, that has been discussed, and that third stop sign was added quite some time ago now. And I believe the rationale, and Chuck, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the rationale behind that was to keep the flow of traffic moving, the major traffic flow, which is north to south, you know, south to north, so Route 7. So that means when you're coming from West Main Street, you have to make that stop, and it would be a right-hand turn to go south on 7 there. So that was put in quite some time ago, it's been discussed, and, you know, that ball's been tossed around for a long time. But what we did do is, we did add little yellow information signs that says it's a three-way stop underneath the stop signs that exist there. I believe they're on all three.
Yeah, I believe, I believe all three stop signs say three-way stop. Unfortunately, the fourth leg, you can't really, there's no MUTCD regulated sign that says this is not a stop.
Right.
And I'm not trying to be facetious there. I understand what you're referring to, so it can be confusing. Hopefully, the, you know, the, the race crosswalk will slow down vehicles entering from that direction, but there's, there's really no appropriate sign for that one leg to, to add there to, to help out the situation. And as mentioned, like, the other three stop signs do say three-way.
Right. And when we first adopted this plan as a test, and did the line, the painting, and reducing the size of that intersection, and trying to better guide people through the intersection, it was done as a test. And so we do have the statistics for that intersection for the last two years, and we do see a significant improvement. We were averaging, and it wasn't a huge problem, but we were averaging about, I'd say, prior to 2019 or so, we were doing about seven accidents per year in that intersection, and 2020 and in 2021, we've only had four. And basically, the four for 2021, failure to yield right of way, failure to stop, and then one that was caused by a medical issue, someone was ill, and it created an accident. So we don't have a huge number of incidents there, and yes, sometimes it can be confusing, but I think anytime that someone is traveling in an unfamiliar area, it can be very confusing. I think most local people understand exactly what's going on at that intersection. So the majority of our, you know, traffic during the year is probably commuters that are local. So the majority of our, you know, traffic during the year is probably commuters that are local.
And I believe, you know, paying the lines, people drive over, but these bump outs and stuff is going to be more pronounced. And I think it would be a little more sensible when you get to it, of where you're going and who has the right of way.
Yeah, because people aren't, that, that's the whole point, is that this has been a pretty good test, but people do, you know, do make improper turns and they do drive over those lines. But once it's raised, you know, nobody is really going to want to do that. That's an unpleasant experience. And it's like if you've ever hit the rumble strip on the turnpike, you know, it's, it would be unpleasant to go over that. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Van. Good presentation.
Thank you. You guys have a nice evening.
You too.
Take care.
Okay, next on the agenda, Culvert Grant Program, the MVP Grant, Allison Dixon is with us. Allison, come up and identify yourself.
Sure. Thank you for having me tonight. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Allison Dixon. I work for the Husatonic Valley Association. Our office is here in town. I'm the Berkshire Watershed Conservation Manager. And I am here today to speak about the Lennox Municipal Vulnerability Planning Action, Regional Action Grant that we are a part of, and so is Stockbridge. And the project is called Husatonic Stream Restoration for Regional Flood Resilience Project. Long, long time. Basically, Husatonic Valley Association is the watershed organization and we have been doing road stream crossing management plans for a long time. And this is, I did not do it right as field, so I'm forgetting what comes next, so you might just. This regional action grant has multiple partners and participating communities. The town of Lennox, New Marlborough, and town of Stockbridge, and the city of Pittsfield. There were three participating communities along with multiple organizations. As you can see there, Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, they're kind of the umbrella, the administrative umbrella. Mass Audubon, it is the key educator. HBA is also doing education with, there is a grant that we're involved with. So that is actually a bit of a match for this grant as there is a required 25% match. Trout Unlimited, we work, partner with them on doing this kind of work and they are going to be helping in an additional capacity. And Greenagers, if you're familiar with them, they employ youth for doing conservation work. So this is a step in that direction to some different kind of work where the youth are going to be doing the assessments of the culverts. And University of Connecticut, they're involved with, helping with those. They do the flood risk analysis. So if we go to the next page, slide, that's just our watershed. And this project is of course up in the Berkshire County region. If we go to the next slide. We are all familiar with how climate change is impacting us and we're seeing more rain. And this can be a result at a road stream crossing. So everywhere you have a road crossing over a stream, you've got some kind of infrastructure underneath. A pipe, it could be a bridge, whatever. And the increased precipitation events have been known to blow them out completely or cause severe erosion. And the other, next one, it's not only an impact to the infrastructure. We want to have some connectivity under these roads so that our cold water species such as the native brook trout can find refuge upstream. If they're, they need to, often need to move from warmer streams up and find colder streams. And especially as we're seeing our changing climate, higher temperatures, this is going to become important. So this work furthers the watershed goals, but also the goal is to provide greater climate resilience to the towns, the communities. Next slide. And the outcomes of this project. So we are going to be identifying potential products, projects that build climate resilience and that we can seek funding for. There is outreach and education that focuses on what climate change is, what is climate resilience? How can we move towards that? We'll be doing that through school programs. We'll be doing landowner outreach and we'll be doing also tabling events, displays with our multiple partners. It's not all HBA. But the ultimate outcome, and I have meant to bring an example, the road stream crossing management plan for each town includes an inventory of all the road stream crossings, an assessment of those crossings, how they fare in different levels of storms, 2, 5, 25, 50, all the way up 100-year storms. And we'll be meeting with key town people to get town input into which crossings have been an issue and looking at prioritizing replacements. So you have a plan going forward on which crossings are most in need of replacement, whether it's they're beginning to fail, whether they're likely to overtop, or they just are a barrier as well and will afford you some better climate resilience. So next slide. These road stream crossing management plans have a bunch of components. And the difference with this regional action grant is, you can see under number one, that's where Greenagers comes in. They are going to be recruiting youth and we've already started that process this fall. We use Stockbridge as a training ground and we had an incredible crew and they were out there. We met some landowners too. And they will begin again in April and May, April, May time. Should be beginning in April. To continue the work, we expect to finish Stockbridge this spring. And then all that information will go to UCOM to, for their flood risk modeling so they can see which crossings might overtop during a storm. And an additional thing we are going to be looking at, since we have crews out there, where does it make sense, where, is there a lot of stormwater input? Does it, if that culvert got replaced, does it make sense to infiltrate that? Is there a lot of road sediment getting into that stream? Is there erosion upstream? Is there potential for greater flood storage? So we are going to be looking at, and that's the nature-based solutions. Gathering some information in the field and Trout Unlimited will be doing something called LiDAR analysis, which will help identify these potential future projects to build greater climate resilience into the town of Stockbridge and the other communities. And as I mentioned, we'll be doing some prioritization work with the town to really come up with a good plan for the future. Next slide. And the goal really, when you replace culverts for the fish, you really want them to cross under the road and not even realize that they're going under a road. And so generally, there are stream crossing standards in Massachusetts that require replacements, provided it's economically feasible, to be 1.2 bankful width. So extra width wide to allow that extra volume of water to go through, so it doesn't act like a dam. It allows the movement of debris through, so it doesn't clog and pond. And we did see one culvert, which I know Stockbridge is already aware of, and actually had a Mass DER culvert grant on it, where we saw huge loss clogging at the inlet. And it even allows, it often allows terrestrial passage. So animals, instead of being pushed up over the road, might go under the road and there's less mortality on the road, which can improve public safety if it's larger animals like deer. And that certainly can help with turtle mortality. And I have seen this one stretch of Route 7 where I think I saw seven dead turtles in one season. So these crossings, they're good for wildlife and they're also good for people too. And next slide. So this is kind of the timeline. We expect to be, we're working out how that nature-based analysis will be done and establishing protocols for the crews to follow. And we're been working with Michael and the town on outreach and getting the letters ready. We've got spreadsheets. So those letters will go out in March to let landowners know that you may see a youth crew crawling around a culvert. Call it street troopers, troll patrol. Often you have to be on, you have to get onto private property just to do the assessment. And some of these culverts are on private property. So we want to reach out to those landowners to say, hey, we think there's a crossing there. Do you mind? We'd like to come. And when that, when we do go, when the crew does go there, they knock on the door and once again, reach out to the landowner. So they should get a letter. And we're also looking at including a fact sheet. And I brought, this is the fact sheet that we're likely to revise and I brought copies of it. This is HBA's basic fact sheet about our whole road stream crossing management plan process. So we need just to be continuing field assessments in April and May. And then the flood risk modeling will start in June, but it'll be, take a, a stretch of time. The outreach and education, this is a two-year grant. It's almost $300,000 for the four communities. And before the end of the two years, we will have, sooner for Stockbridge, we'll have a complete road stream crossing management plan. And the hope is that the top priority crossing, that we will be able to garner funding to get you that next step forward, to get a preliminary design done so that you're at, we set the stage to keep that process going and that we can get a crossing replaced for you. And next slide, I think that's about it. This is just an example. We worked with Pittsfield on Churchill Brook. There were two crossings. We worked them on funding and other aspects. So this was the lower crossing on Hancock Road where you can see initially two pipes. It was replaced with a bridge. And it was amazing. I got to be there when Mass Wildlife did an electroshocking earlier this year. And tons and tons of little native brook trout, but they, a humongous brook trout. And the only way that could have gotten into that stream was that it came up from Anoda Lake. And now that it's a bridge and not those small pipes and perched, you see how it's like a waterfall. That's the outlet. It's hard for the trout to get up into there. So that movement was very evident with the electrofishing. And just phenomenal to see. So that is the future. And they, these crossings have been, have proven to be climate resilience in the face of our increasing larger storms. I think that's it. Next slide. Yeah. If anybody would like more information, we do have a library displayed that we expect to be arranging to put out in the library with some information about this project. And I welcome people to call or email me and ask questions. And I did, I think I promised Hugh, I've already met with Hugh because we're looking at providing the information we collect so that it can inform his data layer of where all these culverts are and what they are. So I think I promised him a map that he could have, but this, it might make sense to put one of these somewhere. But this, this is the initial map. This is the map that the, that the field crew works with that marks the locations of all the expected crossings. And I met with Hugh to talk about where are there some that aren't on the map? And then the crew, when they go out, they, they're looking for what we call unmapped crossings.
And how many, how many mapped crossings do you have so far in Stockbridge?
There's about 70.
All right.
I would say 74. I think by the time we're done, that we'll probably have assessed at least 80.
And in your experience in other towns or just as an expert, of those 80 stream crossings, how many will require some level of improvement or complete redesign or?
I think, from the work we've done on this fact sheet, I think it indicates that approximately 15%. And we only do the flood risk on the closed bottom, not the bridges. Bridges are usually, tend not to be an issue. However, I think there's a couple in Stockbridge that are very old bridges that I actually had a conversation with my colleague, the watershed director, because their analysis is different with the open bottoms. But I do have concerns that these are, look like undersized bridges. So approximately 15%.
Right.
That's what's typical.
Would be, need to be replaced or would need to be improved?
Would fail in a 25-year flood. So.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, and, and on average, what is the cost to replace a culvert?
Oh.
I'm just, I'm making a point here. I know the answer.
Some of the plans, because we're working with about five towns right now, Edgemont, Richmond, Barrington. I think those preliminary designs are coming out around $200,000.
To replace the culvert?
Yeah.
Okay. So times 12, 15% of 80 is 12.
It can be more.
Yeah.
The engineer we work with, it's, it's the Trout Engineer, Trout Unlimited's engineer that does our designs and he really works on making and keeping costs down as much as possible with his choice of replacement structure.
But even, even in that scenario, we could be looking at $2 to $3 to $4 million in cost over some time to replace those 25-year, those at risk of a 25-year.
Yeah, and it's, it's hard to say because that's kind of a, a general number.
Yeah, I know. But.
Yeah, it can, it's an expensive process and this is, so the MVP action grants, they know that they're, they, they get a lot of these kinds of action grants replacement. There are multiple avenues to gain funding for replacements. So.
All right.
And there's a lot coming down the pipe too. My understanding is the budget for the MVP action grant this year is 21 mil, 20, 21 million.
Good.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Allison from the public?
And I would like to offer that as we go through this and maybe have some progress updates, I'm happy to return. And I also talked to Patrick today. I was talking about, you know, I, I thought it would be a good idea to reach out and do a similar presentation at the Conservation Commission and just get a sense of what has come before them and what concerns they have and how they manage their culvert maintenance. Because I'm getting lots of those questions for other towns.
The only one that has, I'm not sure what the green check mark is. It's not a hands up. So I'm not sure, Brent? Are you looking to ask a question?
Looks like everyone is muted, so.
No, no, sorry. I just put that up to say thank you for the answering my last one.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Allison.
Thank you so much. You very much. That was great.
Good to be here in person.
Yeah, it is nice.
All right. Next, we have CPC priorities for the stock board for fiscal year '23. And Chuck, do you want to discuss? And Chuck, do you want to discuss what you think your priorities for CPC would be?
We got the honest ones, right?
That's not me.
That's the prioritized list, so.
Just in terms, this, just in terms of CPC funds. How about you, Patrick? I know you always do.
Well, no, I mean, I tried to.
I know you do.
This is one where I'm the rap, so you would expect me to, you know, at least have a, a overview. Actually, Allison's still here, which is great, because we were talking about this today, too. We've got a plan to apply. We've, we've done an early expression of interest on the Campusa work with the MVP program. There's $21 million, as you said, available. That's for the whole state. These grants are incredibly competitive. So, and we put in three requests. So if we get even one, we're going to be doing great. But I don't think it's realistic that we'll get, you know, the Ice Glen one and the Forest one and the Campusa one. So, you know, the question is whether we want to consider putting in, under the open space bucket, there's open space recreation, there's housing, there's historic preservation. You know, I was thinking that maybe we put in for $50,000, for a hydrology, hydrology study that's going to cost $100,000. We do a request of $50,000 from CPC. And, you know, if we're going to do that, then we should also match it with a town warrant for 50 grand. And then if we get money from the state, it would obviously reduce what that exposure is. But we're not going to know, you know, before town meeting, because those grants won't be announced until, over the summer. So, you know, so that was one that for us to consider. And I don't know if you want to talk about each one individually, or you want to get the, the complete overview and then talk about them? It's up to you.
Why don't you give the overview and then?
All right. Michael and I have been working with the Agriculture and Forestry Commission, which is, you know, looking to, you know, do a funding for Ice Glen treatment for, you know, with the injection rather than spray. It's a more expensive project, process, possibly a tune of up to $50,000. Once again, maybe split that with a match from the town. They also would like to do interpretive sign and trail work, where, where really trying to just do like an introductory sign when you get into Ice Glen. With some of the storms we had, there are a number of very large trees in Ice Glen that are kind of blocking trails and that are beyond the capability of volunteers to deal with. So getting somebody up there to sort of, especially where they, they, they block trails, you know, bringing, bringing a professional in, which is, you know, especially in the gorge, is pretty, pretty challenging. And I, and I think Matt's going to come up with some ideas of pricing on that with Michael. Michael and I have talked about the renovation of Glendale Firehouse as a historic project. I think that you estimated that was going to be about $75,000. And we were thinking about maybe doing a half request on CPC and half via warrant item. Or, or a different formula if you want, Michael. I mean, I, you know. I, I did not come up today at the Housing Trust Fund meeting. However, with the, with the, you know, windfall that we have in CPC this year, my personal recommendation is that we, we fund the Housing Trust Fund with $150,000. That's out of the $700,000 that's available. That still leaves more than, not more, that still leaves a significant amount of funding for town and non-town projects. And then finally, on Parks and Rec, we talked about, you know, some kind of a, a engineering consultant to figure out how we add senior exercise equipment to Park Street. Michael and I have talked about that a little bit, you know, really trying to come up with a plan this year and then figuring in future years how we implement it. Roxanne, I'm thinking that you're going to talk to the engineer that was involved on the beach about what the cost might be to come up with a plan to remove invasives, replant the, the area, buy the kayak racks and add the, add the path down there. This is at the town beach where there's currently frag lighties. And then, and then there's the question of engineering placement of, of stones at the Houstonic to make it easier to launch kayaks, similar to what they have in Edgermont and up in Williamstown. So that is the universe of projects for CPC that, that, you know, we're, we've been discussing.
Yeah. I think the parks, I think need a lot of attention.
Right.
I think we've got a lot of parks, upstate yard playgrounds and parks and recreation and hiking. And I think that's been neglected for a long time. And I think we've really got to invest in parks.
And what's the rationale behind, you know, funding just half of, of some of these projects?
CPC likes to see a match, you know, where there's, where there's, there's always obviously many more dollar amounts of requests than what the fund will allow. And so by, by matching funds, you know, we, we show that what the town is committed and that, you know, that we just have a better chance of, of doing more, more of these projects if we have, if the price tag of each one is less, obviously. So.
Right. I'm just wondering about the selection of which ones are, you know, matching funds and which ones are not. I was just curious what the rationale is behind.
They all have matching funds.
They all do?
I mean, that would be my recommendation, is that we do a 50-50 split on them all.
Okay.
Except for maybe the Housing Trust Fund, where, where we, if we're going to do a match, let's just increase it even more. I mean, we can also, I believe we can, well, look at this different town.
Right. Then the other thing that, that we've talked about is doing something, asking for some funds to do some kind of a design for historical interpretation.
Yes. In fact, that was, that's a great.
And monuments in town, because I think we need to capitalize on our history. And we really have nothing in town to indicate, you know, the significant rich history that we have here. So I think at least to get together maybe $15,000 to $20,000 to, to put together a plan to be able to do that.
Right. I think that's great.
So that's another one that I would suggest.
Good.
But yeah, I agree. I mean, it's important. I think it's extremely important that, you know, we're taking taxpayer dollars, in essence, and we're addressing issues that we have in town.
And there's a lot of really, you know, as I'm sure you know, there's a lot of really creative ways we can, we can create, you know, interactions between our history and visitors and students and whatever, you know, you know, scannable QR codes that title into a website that tells a story. We could even do that, you know, we could, we could do interactive maps of the cemetery that would, you know, literally like play an audio clip or provide information on key graves in the cemetery. I mean, there's a lot of really creative things we could do that would, you know, help tell an interactive story. You know, and in some ways, it's very similar to what, you know, what, what the AFC wants to do, Agriculture and Forestry wants to do in terms of the interpretive work at Ice Glen. I mean, really, really, you know, kind of walking, interactive, you know, what is it called?
And we've talked about.
Submersion or immersion, immersion.
Yeah. And we're planning to do this Revolutionary War monument.
That's what I asked, bring that up. Where are you staying with that? The Trail Ever Find the Stone or?
We got a stone.
Got a stone.
You need any money for the stone?
So I have to, yeah, I have to do a little more homework on that. So I have to get costing on that. And I have to get what they want to write. But that's a situation where they can't put all the names. And the intention is not to necessarily name every person. But they're going to come up with, you know, some kind of an inscription that would be engraved on this stone for the Revolutionary War soldiers. And same thing.
Yeah, we could access it and get a list.
A QR code where that then links you to the known names that we.
Can you chisel a QR code? I don't know.
Should be able to do it. It's doable.
That'd be cool. All right. That's all I got.
I think that's great.
Yep. Thanks.
Perfectly right.
Yeah. Okay. Next up, ARPA use of proceeds. Michael, you want to address that?
So I did send out to you guys the brief.
It was only 100 pages.
I couldn't read it.
I couldn't stretch it. It was too much.
Yeah, it's their overview of what we can use, the final rule. It's 44 pages. And that's considered the overview of how you can use your ARPA funds. The actual final rule is quite.
How much do we have?
So we're going to be receiving approximately half a million dollars in ARPA funds. And a bunch of the areas is, you know, there are restrictions on the use and there are different areas that we can't. One of the biggest that might be one we want to focus on, especially since we see issues, is water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure is something that is allowed under the ARPA funding. There are, there are some, if, if you have negative economic impact areas, so, you know, from COVID. So those can be assistance to households looking at, are there any ways to provide assistance to small business or nonprofits or aid to impacted industries? Obviously, you have to set up the criteria. They have to be able to show that how they were negatively impacted and, and stuff like that. Responding to emergency health emergencies, and there, there is available funding for, obviously, protective gear, stuff like that. But right now, we're pretty well stocked with those things that are needed. So far, the only appropriation that you have approved was working with Tri-Town Health, their, their initiative, which was with us, Lee and Lennox. And it was about $16,000 to the towns, ARPA funds. So right now, I, I put it out there just to begin the discussion. So we need to start thinking of how are we going to target this. I wanted you guys to just be aware. Let those first questions happen. And then over the next couple of meetings, start developing a plan on how we're going to use the ARPA funds right forward.
How is it that households can?
You'd have to show that there's negative income, negative impacts due directly to COVID. So how, how we'll set up those, I'm still reading through everything, the larger document.
Good luck with that.
Trying to learn that, which, you know, we were able to effectively use $126,000 of CARES fund. One of them was specifically addressing our HVA system over at the library, which would have originally probably either been a CPC fund request or a possible, because it was for the museum and the rest, or a free cash or funded over at town meeting. Instead, we were able to use the CARES Act to address that need. So similar to that, we, we can look at these. We can figure out, you know, is there a criteria to set up some money to assist if there were households that were specifically impacted to it. But once again, it does have contained where they, they have to show the negative impact and that there is a need.
Question? Can I?
Yeah.
Two questions, actually. One of the things it allows is lost revenue. So did you quantify how much lost sales and, 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 and occupation, whatever, you know, hotel revenue we lost during the two years of COVID?
So looking at, we did not see significant number in loss of.
Well, but if you also, if this year you see a significant increase, then you could make the argument that there was a loss based on what it would have been, you know, if it, if it goes up this year.
We definitely anticipated a much larger one originally. If you remember, a couple years ago, the, the local receipts were very much downplayed. And then even last year.
I, I do. I just wanted to know, even a couple hundred thousand dollars, though, is significant. And remember that we raised the, has the 6% increase gone through yet?
All the paperwork was submitted, so I'm not, I will follow up on that.
Okay. Because that might be another reason why it's going up, or it's.
Right. We have, we'll have to mainly look back at what our historic numbers are. But we did not see, we did not see hundreds. If anything, it'll be in the tens of thousands.
All right. I'm just saying that, that, because it's allowable, even if it's 50 grand, that's 50 grand that we don't have to raise and appropriate from taxes. And that's not the worst idea in the world, if, if it's allowable to replace that revenue. My second point is that all throughout this document, it talks about affordable housing as a presumed impacted class.
Right.
And, and, and just to review, that's going to be, you know, you know, for funding for the Affordable Housing Trust, where it's, it's starting out at such a low level compared to what some of the cost would be to actually make a real impact there. I think that that's a really great use of proceeds for at least some chunk of this.
So I think one of the things is, is if the, between the three of you working through me, we start identifying those ones that you wouldn't like to see prioritized, then we start looking specifically into the projects we'd like to follow through from the overview into the actual further control documents of what you can use it for. And then if needed, there are, there are officials at the state level, which we did with the library and said, okay, we think this meets criteria. And then we did call them and say, okay, this is where we're looking to fund it. And their response was, yeah, we'd be able to fund that. So we can begin targeting and how we want to use this money. We're a little bit behind, but we have two years to use it. And in the next couple of months, we just have to think of how we want to use it.
Well, I think we should have a conversation with the Sewer and Water Commission as well, because I think that's one big area that we could attack, the Elm Street problem.
Right.
That was one. Go for it.
Right. One other question, one other available use of funds is, is we can bring, you know, there's, there's two ways to order fast internet. There is, individuals can set up through Spectrum, or you can bring it into a building and then have everybody take part in the building. You know, for example, you know, like in Lennox, there's a couple of developments to do it this way, where they bring in a bigger pipe and then people effectively, you know, get free or subsidized internet if, if they're, you know, affordable. We could conceivably bring broadband into Heaton Court and/or Pinewood's and, and effectively allow people to save, you know, 100 bucks, 120 bucks each a month on ordering individual service, which might make a really significant impact on the seniors at Heaton Court and, and the, you know, the, you know, the.
So the, see, I guess I, that one, let me look a little further, because while it is improved.
It's a low-income subsidy program.
Infrastructure, right. It's a subsidy, but, you know, yeah. And remember, it's funding for a couple of years here. So it's not.
No, but if you bring the pipe in with the money, then it costs, let's say the, let's say that for 32 apartments at, at Pinewood's, it's $1,000 a month.
Right.
Then you basically are charging each person 30 bucks a month. I mean, it's not easy, but it's, it could save folks in need a giant amount of money compared to basically buying at retail from Spectrum.
Right.
You know?
Right. All right. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Chuck?
Nope.
You good? Okay. And final item on our agenda tonight is for us to start, I think it's important for us to start prioritizing objectives as board. And basically, this could be one to five-year priorities. And so we've, Mike has been nice enough to compile a list of everything that we've brought together here. And I'm just going to go through it. I'm just going to hit the high points here. I'm going to hit the main categories. We're not going to go into any detail, because we'll be fleshing out details later. But on this list, and there's no prioritization here, this is just a list of things that we do think are important. One is housing. The next one is.
I'll throw it up for you, so you can.
Yeah, why don't you pull it up? Okay, housing. So there's a couple of categories under here, but various types of housing, workforce housing, i.e. starter homes and or apartments, elder housing alternatives for aging in place, ADUs, condo homes with services, condos or homes with services and assisted living, facilitate independence of seniors and the disabled, develop council on aging programs, obviously, and ADA compliant environment throughout our business district, which we're working on. Infrastructure, and I'm not going to go through all of this. But basically, well, there is a real awareness right now, and we've been attacking, you know, repair to the infrastructure. And I think it's recognized by all of us and certainly by Mike, that we have to have an ongoing maintenance plan in place.
I think you should go through the list, even if it's just really briefly. I mean, I think it, it speaks to, you know.
Chuck gets tired at night, because he's, he's worked all day. Tucker River Bridge. So we are proceeding with construction design and funding sources right now. Curtisville Bridge, we have to review the status of that. I think it's very important that this board makes some kind of a decision to move forward on that. And it's historic designation. Second Averick Road Bridge, we're applying for a small bridge grant for up to $500,000. Butler Bridge, engineering and assessment, if that's ongoing.
Yep.
Okay. Playgrounds, we want to be ADA compliant, obviously park improvements, which we've touched upon. The Salt Shed at the Highway Department, we know we're going to have to replace that. So engineering and design is being done. Highway equipment, large truck and equipment, cemetery restoration, which we just had a cemetery commission meeting. So we're moving forward with that. Glendale Fire Station, which was mentioned this evening also, and stormwater, and there are issues with stormwater on Elm Street. are issues with stormwater on Elm Street, which the Sewer and Water Commission has discussed. In progress right now, we have the Larry Wog Bridge, and so we just have the punch, the final paving to complete, the final punch list in the springtime. Averick Road, that will be completed in spring of 2022.
Just the bridge.
Inventory in progress with MVP, so we heard from Allison, that was fascinating. The pump station replacement, RFP has been released and the bids are due in February. So, all this is ongoing, but again, the major categories so far are housing and infrastructure. We also have next, natural resources stewardship, another, I think, a very important consideration for most residents of Stockbridge, is really stewarding our natural resources and making sure that we're taking care of them via the SBSC and with the help of the SBA. Right now, we know that we're going to have an issue with the water chestnuts, which have invaded. There is project that will have to go on with the state for the state boat ramp. Obviously, we're addressing Ice Glen, Campusa Bog, forest management and watershed protection. So, the hemlock tree treatment is in progress, RFP released in February, will be released in February, and treatment will begin spring 2022, and dredging the final design is in progress right now. Next major category is economic revitalization, expanding the downtown public parking, and I think we should really look at the development of the industrial park, which has kind of sat idle and unused.
It's privately owned.
So.
It's privately owned, I think.
It's privately owned, but that doesn't mean we can't have conversations.
We've been approached, too.
Expansion of public utilities. So, we need to be planning for the future as well, so the long-range future, and I think that we start to have to start anticipating, what kind of expansions are we going to be looking at, and what would we like to do, and let's plan now for what might happen five or 10 years down the road. So, for both sewer and water. Improved communication with residents, we've talked about this before, doing some kind of a website update, make it more user-friendly, and we've also discussed, between Michael and myself, automated dissemination of meeting minutes, which is being done in Lennox right now. I think it's semi-automated, I think there's human intervention, but I think it would be worth looking into. In-gender community cohesiveness, incentivize younger families to live in Stockbridge, we know that a healthy community has many generations, we need more children, we need more younger people here. And I think we could probably do something to develop community activities. And my big question is, we have a senior center, and why do we call it the Senior Center? Can we call it the Community Center to possibly encourage its use by more people? So, that's something we can talk about.
Pretty simple.
What do you think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another 10, another million here.
Yeah, just changing.
New sign off.
Well, I have to laugh, because my spinning guild is meeting there once every two weeks right now.
And that's not a senior meeting?
And one of the women joked that when she said she was going to the Stockbridge Senior Center, he gave her the hairy eyeball, like, we're going where? So, I said, you know, it could be just called the Community Center. Chuck's mentioned this in the past, and we've discussed it in the past, outdoor pavilion to host community events. Another big topic is increased affordability for residents. So, we will be looking at, on the warrant, tax exemptions, deferrals, et cetera. One thing I would like Mike to pursue, that I know he's familiar with, is investigate the Community Choice Power Supply Program, which I sent you a copy of what they have in Lennox, and they've done it in Great Barrington, I think, too.
And it's actually the Berkshire County one.
Yeah.
It's the one he did, yeah.
I wrote.
Yeah, so.
You know a lot of them.
Stockbridge decided six years ago not to join, I'm not sure why.
Well, it would be, and just for the public, let me see, somewhere I have it written down.
I was stuck in the two. I don't know why.
But, I was gonna, I had the mass general law here, but now I don't say it, just, but anyway, Mike can explain that maybe in a future meeting, because we want to go over this quickly. The residential exemption, obviously, that's still on the table. Senior work, can we increase that to 1,500? Next big category, preserve the history of Stockbridge. So, develop a historical information plan to preserve and capitalize on our rich history. Oral and video recordings is one idea. Obviously, what we just discussed earlier for CPC request was doing some kind of public historic locale information. Archival preservation of our town records, which there might be a possibility that we could get some assistance on that from Norman Rockwell, based on a previous conversation I've had with him. In progress, we're working on the cat and dog fountain. CPC funds estimated to be completed spring 2022, basin issue is to be resolved, do we know when that'll be resolved?
That's the one caveat on that.
Just use that free cash for that, I mean, can we just like get it done?
Yeah, yeah.
So, what's the issue with the basin? I mean, you just got to replace it.
The, underneath the basin, all the brick had deteriorated to the point that the, it's going to have, the basin itself is going to have to be completely redone.
Why are we doing it?
Round pieces, we'll, we'll work on that.
Capstones will all stay.
Capstones will stay, and the rest, and in order, you still need to have design for the projects, so right now, just having a little difficulty locking this down, so, but I am working with the committee on that.
Okay. Soldier's Monument, i.e. also known as the Civil War Monument, but appropriately and correctly called the Soldier's Monument, RFP to be issued late winter 2022, the work will be done summer through fall of 2022.
We already have, though, that's already in place, we already, we already started that work.
At least the RFP for the actual work, we have the funds already available.
Yeah, but they, the engineer, you know, came in and they did the test, and now we have to evaluate it.
Done, we have to do the actual finished work, option one.
Right. But isn't that vendor selected?
What?
Isn't that vendor selected?
No.
Okay.
They did the grad evaluation, they ended.
All right, so you're saying it's a different project than the grad evaluation and?
Right, right, so now we're actually putting out the RFP to do the finished work that was based up on condition, option one. Spoke to her today, she's, within the next couple of weeks, she's going to get the, the specifications for bid proposal, then I'll put together the bid proposal, we'll have it out with a hope to have the work done if we can select a vendor for summer and fall.
Okay. And then, of course, the chime tower, RFP spring of 2022, work to be completed in fall of 2022 to the spring of 2023. And then, another major consideration is school projects, you know, remains to be seen what the impact to the town is going to be, but we have to start anticipating it.
Oh, absolutely, and there may be, there may be a district merger that is going to be come to town meeting, but, you know, it's not, you know, there's a lot of work on, on the question of new high school and timing and, you know, merger and everything.
And if there's anything else you guys would like to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, added.
I just had a couple of.
Important places to focus, you know.
Every one of them are.
Yeah.
I think that it's important that we frame water and sewer as much on maintenance and, and repair as on expansion, you know, just talking to Mike, you know, just in general, he's not sewer, but we were talking about sewer the other day, and he was talking about the two-foot sections in the 1880s, when they were built, and their concrete, and how we had infiltration in some days, with all the rain last year of a million gallons a day, and, you know, we're going to need to reline those, and, you know, and, and a lot of folks legitimately, you know, I, I don't mean to, you know, editorialize, a lot of folks have, have talked about expansion of sewer. I think it's really important also that we talk about, you know, modernizing 150-year-old infrastructure where we need to, because we can't have a million gallons of gray water going through the system. I'm not saying we are every day, but he just threw that number up.
Yes.
No, but we do.
And it's still operating.
Right, Michael, you know what I'm saying, you know, the, the.
But we know we have existing issues down the street, and I'll just put it this way, I think it's extremely important that, for instance, you would not build an addition on your house if your roof was leaking, you would be repairing the roof, and I think that's the situation that we're in, and I kind of think that the Water and Sewer Commission takes that attitude. So, it's not that sewer and water expansion wouldn't happen, but it, it may have to take a backseat to actually taking care of an existing problem that could become a lot worse.
Now, another minor note, but if you're talking about automated dissemination of meeting minutes, one easy to execute and significant improvement over the Lennox system would be to give the user who puts it in their email address the ability to put in comma delineated keywords. So, for example, I live on Hawthorne Street, stop by, say hello. If I could put in Hawthorne, then any meeting minutes and, or any meeting agenda that includes the word Hawthorne would automatically be sent to me, it's really easy.
We don't have to go into the details.
Okay, all right, that's.
Deal with that later.
Work with you Patrick, our website designer.
That's yours.
That's yours.
Then let me just see if I have anything else.
Something else to add?
So, what I was going to say is, between now and our next meeting, if the board would like to, if there's any additional things you think needed to be added to this list, then the other thing I would recommend, because I saw this happen when we did the MVP up in North Adams, and I'm not sure if we did it here, but if you color code it, and actually, I did it on the ADA when I was working for the city, and we had to come up with a plan, and we did it around the same thing, a one, three, five-year plan, is that you color code it by green, yellow, and red. So, you identify, highlight, and get it back to me, if you would highlight all the ones you think should happen within the next year, the ones in yellow that should happen within the next three years.
It's one, three, and five months.
Nice try. And then the things that can be pushed out to the five years.
Look at the projects you have passed two years ago, we're still getting it on the table.
So, and, and obviously, if you could get that back to me, I can compile it and then bring it back to you, and we can look at how we grade things and then develop this.
You know, look, it's really important that, this is a great list, and, and so much of it is already going on, which I think is really, you know, testament to a lot of people, and it sounds hard work. I think, I think you need to kind of also, you know, make sure that, I mean, you made the point to me privately, and I'm sure to everyone else, about how having fewer projects that actually get completed is more important than having a long laundry list where we can kind of put out our best ideas, and I know I'm guilty of that, the way other people are, maybe more so, but, so, I would appreciate it if also, beyond us kind of giving you our priorities, you give us a reality check of, because we know that we're doing triage in some, we know we got to do those, and then how much more can the system handle before nothing gets done?
So, what I would do is take your list, and I have my four meetings that I have monthly, I have a finance group meeting, I have a public work group meeting, I have a public safety group meeting, and then I have a town hall staff group meeting, and I would take your ideas and run them past everybody that are part of my team to say, okay, here's what we're doing, guys, how, which one, how realistic is it, can we get to all these, can't we, can we? And then, like I said, I, right, I've expressed that, that I would rather see the projects coming in and off the board, instead of just lining the board with a million and one projects, so.
We got a lot being done, just takes forever to complete them.
But I want everybody to remember that, like, these major headings are still, these are areas of focus that I think we always should be addressing in this town, and there will always be different projects that are associated with them, and there's always going to be a timeline for all those projects, and some of these things may go out five or 10 years.
Right, yeah.
So, anyway, do we have any comments or questions from the public? Any hands up, Mike?
Where do we, not online, where do we stand?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Well, madam, but I do have something I'd like to say, so when you finish that topic.
All right, I have Patty Kaya.
Kaya.
Kaya, sorry.
Patty Kaya?
Hi, this is, I'm, I'm sorry that my comment is from so long ago, but this is the first time you've asked for comments since it came up. So, in the, the community preservation funding, I was wondering if there's been any discussion of adding some kayak racks to the beach? There's always like an enormous demand for the racks, and also, from my experience talking to other towns, for example, Monterey has kayak racks that are for sort of the same width as the ones we have, but also, they have ones that are more appropriate for people who have two kayaks or a canoe, which the two kayaks kind of blurp over the side of the kayak rack. So, anyway, this is from so many minutes ago, so I apologize.
Oh, no problem, no problem. No, that, and Parks and Recreation, I believe, are talking about adding a second kayak rack at the beach.
A third, right.
Or a third.
A third.
An additional, yeah, an additional rack, so yes, they have discussed that.
And we are examining an alternate site to have additional racks.
Right.
Beach, but we're not sure.
Right, we have, yeah, we're looking at the feasibility of having also a second site where you could access a kayak rack and, and enter the water with it, but we have to make sure that it's feasible and safe before that would proceed.
Yeah.
So, if I wanted to follow this issue, would the best approach be to attend any meeting that's about community preservation funds?
Yesterday, yesterday, we had a problem with our Zoom vendor, you know, just, their system was down, so people weren't able to get into the meeting. Well, we had four or five nonprofits who came in person, and we conducted that part of the meeting there, and I recorded it, and we're having a follow-up meeting for the Zoom that will be this Tuesday at 4:00 p.m. So, I apologize that we had some technical difficulties, they were kind of beyond our control, because I know that you were thinking of coming on. I would say the discussions that, the discussion of expansion of additional racks and changing the racks and that would happen at the Park and Rec Committee level.
Right.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I was addressing the CPC, because she was on, trying to get in yesterday.
And also, on a very related note, and I'm sorry, I don't actually understand quite how the budgeting works, so the Parks and Recs Committee has actually saved some money in the past two pandemic summers because of the, the lack of lifeguards, and I'm just curious, did that money get reallocated toward Park Rec initiatives, or did that just get rolled back into the general fund?
So, closeout at the end of the year, the funds restore back into the general funds, including salaries can't be re, can't, don't get moved in the expenses, they would just be used for additional salaries, so those, those funds from the previous years have, have gone away, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else with their hand up out there?
Nope.
No, Anita?
Thank you. How do you see the hand up?
What?
Couldn't see the hand up.
Comes up in the corner up there, but I can see.
Yeah, it's like in the background.
It's hard to see.
It's easier on my screen to see it.
But, can I take this off?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, that's better.
I can hear you much better now.
Good evening. So, this is basically the, oh, I'm Anita Schwerner, and I'm the chairperson of the Stockbridge Democratic Town Committee, and I'm speaking on their behalf tonight. So, basically, it is the same letter that was sent to the Select Board, and Michael Canales, and.
Today. Received today, and I was going to mention Roxanne to place it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
As we have.
Thank you.
We can't take action on it.
We have.
We haven't seen the letter.
We have to see the letter, we haven't seen one.
So, it's about Governor Baker's mandate that all public meetings have a remote component is set to expire April 1st, 2022. At the January 22nd, 2022 meeting of the Stockbridge Democratic Town Committee last Saturday, a motion was passed to request that the Select Board support an article on the upcoming town warrant, requiring that all public meetings in Stockbridge have a remote component. We ask also that the Select Board include an item on its next meeting agenda to discuss our proposal and vote on supporting a warrant article that requires the continuation of hybrid and remote meetings. At our meeting, we discussed the importance of transparency in local government, as well as the value of hybrid and remote meetings in enabling an informed electorate. Although the need for hybrid meetings came as a response to COVID-19, the ability to watch and participate in meetings in real time, as well as to access them anytime on CTSB TV, streaming or TV, has been widely embraced. CTSB TV, streaming or TV, has been widely embraced by the residents of Stockbridge, both full and part-time. At the July 15th Select Board Hybrid Meeting, the second homeowners stated that remote meetings are extremely valuable for them, and they appreciate being able to participate in town meetings. They ask that the Zoom option be continued to enable them to attend more town board and committee meetings, which are held during the week. Meetings with a remote option have the advantage of enabling participation from home or anywhere in the world. The availability of Zoom meetings has increased participation among residents and members of the public who find it difficult to attend in person due to a wide variety of reasons, including harsh winter weather, inability to travel, illness or concern over exposure to illness, and conflicts with work or family obligations. So as a first step, the members of the Stockbridge Democratic Town Committee ask that the Select Board place an item on their next meeting agenda so that they can discuss and vote on supporting the requested warrant article. And I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, well, Anita, we will do that.
Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate that. And as you know, it's just been so successful, and this is really impressive setup. I'd love to use it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
You, too.
Thanks, Anita.
Thanks.
Thank you. What's your journey?
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.